Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I will call our Bloomington City Council meeting to order. Tonight is Monday, June 2, 2025. Thank you to everyone here in the council chambers. We've got a good crowd here tonight. Thanks to everybody watching online. We will start our meetings as we always do. If you're able, please stand, remove any head covering, and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, thanks for being here tonight. Great to see everyone. Our first order of business is to approve tonight's agenda. And council, this is what we have on tap for tonight. Under our introductory items, in item 2.0, we've got five items, actually. Item 2.1 will be the introduction of new employees. Item 2.2, a swearing-in of our Growth Through Opportunity Program participants. Looking forward to meeting you folks this evening. We've got two proclamations with items 2.3 and 2.4. The first proclamation for Pride Month and the second proclamation for Juneteenth. And item 2.5, we have an award coming to the city of Bloomington, the Blazing Star Award. As we get into our consent business, Councilmember Carter has our consent business tonight. We have a lengthy consent agenda. We've got 21 items under consent. And folks, if you have anything to hold, make sure you get them to Councilmember Carter. That's under Consent Business. We have three public hearings under item 4, our Hearings, Resolutions, and Ordinances. The first public hearing is item 4.1, Public Hearing Regarding Phase 1 Small Business Codes and Processes Ordinance. And item 4.2 and 4.3, these are two public hearings regarding Charter amendments. Item 4.2 will be regarding Chapter 5 of our charter, and item 4.3 will regard Chapter 6 of our Bloomington Charter. Under item 5, Organizational Business, six items there as well. Busy night tonight. Item 5.1 is we'll have a presentation on our Commercial Nodes Toolkit Update. We will do then appointments. On item 5.2, we're going to do appointments for our Planning Commission. Item 5.3 is an appointment to our young adult member to our Human Rights Commission. 5.4, an appointment of a young adult member to our Parks, Arts, and Recreation Commission. 5.5 will be an appointment of a young adult member to our Sustainability Commission. And then we'll wrap up, as we always do, with item 5.6, our City Council Policy and Issue Update. And hopefully, we will do all of that before we have a thunderstorm that comes rolling through the city of Bloomington, which I think is headed this way right now from the west. So, council, are there any changes or updates to the council or to the agenda this evening? If not, I will move tonight's council agenda as stated. Motion in the second by Councilmember Dalisandro to accept tonight's agenda. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7-0. And so, we will start with our agenda. And our first item is item 2.1, the Introduction of New Employees. I know we've got a couple of new employees. Tim Barrett and Kim Bergeron are—Tim is our Maintenance Soup, and Kim is our Community Development Director. They have introductions to do. Let's start with Tim. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'd like to introduce Tom Murray. He started with the city here as one of our facility service technicians. Tom comes to the city with over 12 years' experience in many different types of maintenance, more recently with Apartment Buildings Maintenance Department. He was managing that. Tom has a bachelor's degree in geology, and he has recently got his Special Engineers Boiler License as well. Tom is originally from central Pennsylvania. He has called Minnesota's home for the last 10 years. Outside of work, Tom enjoys spending time with his wife and three kids, fishing, boating, and playing hockey. Tom has recently—or actually, the last three years—played in the U.S. Pond Hockey Tournament on Lake Nukemus.
Very cool. Tom, welcome. Good evening.
Thank you.
You're going to have to get to know Councilmember Dalisandro, who's a fellow Pennsylvania native. So, yes, indeed.
Where are you from?
Harrisburg area.
Sure, I'm from Altoona.
Okay.
Very good. Well, Tom, welcome aboard. Thank you for being with us this evening. Thanks much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, I have the privilege of introducing Shante Brown, who is the new Office Support Specialist for the Planning Division in the Community Development Department. She is returning to the city from her time with us last summer as a Bloom intern with the Housing and Redevelopment Authority. Shante has experience working with Bloomington Public Schools and is studying public administration at Normandale Community College. Outside of work, she enjoys crafting, cooking, fishing, and swimming in Bush Lake.
Shante, good to see you again.
Hello. I just want to take a moment to thank you all. I'm excited to be here. As a lifelong resident, I am so excited to serve the city, and thank you, guys.
Thank you so much. Both of you, Tom and Shante, thanks for being with us tonight. And I say this to all of our new employees, you've got a big responsibility because, in a lot of ways, you are the face of the city of Bloomington for a lot of people. They don't necessarily know who I am or anybody down this table, but they will interact with you, and they will know who you are. So, it comes with a big responsibility, but I am completely confident of your ability to meet that responsibility and to continue to represent Bloomington and uphold the incredible level of service that our outstanding city employees do every day. So, thanks for being with us. Let's give them a welcome, if we could. Item 2.2 is the swearing-in of our Growth Through Opportunity Program participants. And I think we have a video to introduce this and explain it, and then I will welcome Deputy Chief Damon Bitney up to do the swearing-in for us. So, Ben, if you could play the video, please.
The internship program here is Growth Through Opportunity. We partner with Empowerment Through Inclusion for the program here. We get to bring people into the Police Department who might not normally have that opportunity. It's really important because, you know, a lot of times, government is something that a lot of people don't get exposed to, and to have that experience, I think, for a lot of people can be invaluable.
Empower Inclusion gave a presentation on this program and how they've done it out of different departments throughout the metro, and I thought for sure that some of that here in Bloomington, we want to join in and be a part of. A lot of different departments around the city signed on to be a part of this, and all of them were excited to help out with the internship.
My name is Paola Wickman. So, I'm the job coach. I just hang out with the cadets all the time, just make sure they're okay. If they need any support or assistance in any of the job tasks, I'll be here for them. It's actually my third year doing it. I started with CHSCA, so I just love this program too much because I know how good it's for the people that we support.
To get different people through the city, through the Police Department, giving people opportunities that they probably wouldn't have otherwise.
Hello, my name is Jonathan Jensen. My favorite part of timing is everything such as the police station, firemen station, waterproofs. I've been learning—show me around for the first time ever, and I never been to the police car before. I've been learning some skills about everything, including the firemen, to make sure to stay away, make sure in case there's a fire emergency.
I signed up for the Growth Through Opportunity just because I think it would be fun to learn how to do jobs.
I enjoy coming to work and when they're here.
I just love it, so that's why I'm doing it this year with Bloomington, and yeah, I just like the program.
I will just miss working with Powell and working with Officer Daniels.
Well, council, I think—if you recall, we met Johnny Engage last year when they were sworn in. I'm a little jealous of Johnny. I've not ridden on a Zamboni yet. I don't know how I've missed that one, but he got a ride. And I know the impact was well felt throughout the city organization and with Johnny Engage as well. And so, I really appreciate the Bloomington Police moving forward with this and continuing it for a second year. And Deputy Chief Damon Bitney is here to do the official swearing-in.
Yes, so if you don't mind, I'm going to have our two newest members of the Police Department come up here and join me. All right, so I'm just going to have you raise your right hand.
Deputy Chief, can I interrupt you for just a second? Folks, I see a lot of cameras up. Do not be shy. This is going to happen once. Get up here as close as you can. Take the best possible picture that you can, okay? Come on up here. Don't be shy.
Okay.
In fact—
Yep, don't be shy. Get wherever you need to get.
All right. You ready?
Yeah.
All right. Raise your hand for me. Okay, what's your name?
Thea.
And then?
Pierce.
All right. Just say "I do" after this, okay?
Okay.
You promise to live up to our core value of respect demonstrated through compassion and honest service.
I do.
You?
Preferably do.
Congratulations. Here's yours.
Thank you.
All right, can we get a picture real quick?
Yeah.
Here's yours.
Very good. So, Thea, is it Peter?
Pierce.
Pierce. Thea and Pierce, welcome aboard. So proud to have you with the city of Bloomington. I hope this is going to be an educational and a fun couple of months here for you with the Police Department, and we look forward to seeing you at events across the city. Welcome aboard. We're very excited to have you. Thank you for being with us tonight. We are going to move on, council, to a couple of proclamations, and I'm going to head down to the podium. Okay, which is first on the agenda? All right, thank you. Our first proclamation tonight is for Pride Month, which is June 1 through the 30th, the entire month of June. And as we talked about, we've got a lot of folks here, I think, representing Pride. Come on up and please join us. And you can fight over who gets the microphone when I'm done here. And there we go. This proclamation is for Pride Month, June 1 through the 30th, 2025. Whereas, the month of June 2025 is designated as Pride Month and recognizes the discrimination and violence individuals who identify as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, and asexual, LGBTQIA+, are disproportionately subjected to and raises up and promotes self-affirmation, dignity, equal rights, and increases the visibility of the LGBTQIA+ community. And whereas, the LGBTQIA+ rights movement continues to this day, and while there has been remarkable progress toward acceptance and equality in recent years, members of the LGBTQIA+ community in the United States and around the world still face an unacceptable level of discrimination and violence, so we must remain vigilant and push back against those who seek to roll back our progress. And whereas, members of the transgender community, especially the black and brown trans community and youth trans, face increasing levels of discrimination, hate, and violence that we must all speak out against, and we must take specific actions to protest—to, excuse me—to protect the full human rights and dignity of the trans community. And whereas, the city of Bloomington is committed to being inclusive, equitable, and welcoming of all individuals along the full spectrum of gender identity and sexual orientation, and recognizes that we are a diverse community, enriched by this diversity, including the contributions of the LGBTQIA+ community has made and continues to make. And whereas, the city of Bloomington wants to highlight the efforts of many members of the LGBTQIA+ and allied community who have organized to protect their freedom to read, to gather at Pride celebrations, and have created community in their workplaces, schools, and churches. Their efforts are meaningful and helps to create a safer and more welcoming community. And whereas, the Bloomington Pride Minnesota Organization invites community members and allies to celebrate Pride on the east lawn of Civic Plaza on Sunday, June 22, 2025, from 1:00 to 6:00 p.m. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Tim Bussie, Mayor of the City of Bloomington, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim June 2025 as Pride Month and call upon the people of Bloomington to turn back discrimination and prejudice everywhere it exists and commemorate the courageous individuals who have fought and continue to fight for the rights of LGBTQIA+ people dated the second day of June 2025. We have done a Pride proclamation for a few years now, and we've had Pride celebrations here in Bloomington. I think this is our third or fourth year?
Fifth.
Fifth year already, my goodness, fifth year. And it is always one of the more joyous celebrations that we have on the city plaza campus here. And so, I am so very excited about this year's proclamation, about this year's celebration. And as I said, I want to turn it over. Who would like to speak? Who's very good? Step on up.
It is important that families feel safe in their homes and, by extension, their city and town. I am honored to accept this proclamation from you, the mayor, on behalf of Bloomington Rainbow Cafe and the wider LGBTQIA+ community.
Very good. And now, make sure everybody knows—I didn't introduce you, you didn't introduce yourself. Please make sure everybody knows who you are.
I'm Paula Bickel, and I'm working with the Bloomington Rainbow Cafe, which supports —not actually food, but it's supporting youth and caregivers within the Bloomington geographical area.
Great. Paula, thank you for being here today. And thank you all.
Thank you.
Anybody else stepping up? Dakota, anybody?
On behalf of Bloomington Pride Minnesota, which is a proud nonprofit in this location, and we are celebrating five years, I invite you all to join us on Sunday, June 22, from 1:00 to 6:00. And if you want to get a little sweat equity, you could also volunteer with us. So, BloomingtonPrideMinnesota.org. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you all for being here. Thank you so very much. Now comes the grip and grin. And a second proclamation this evening, this one for our Juneteenth proclamation. I know we have a lot of folks here, our Chief Equity and Inclusion Officer, Lauren Reynolds, and Pastor Sam and his folks from New Life Church. Come on up. Do not be shy. Thank you for being here. Proclamation for Juneteenth, June 19, 2025. Whereas, on June 19, 1865, in Galveston, Texas, more than two years after President Abraham Lincoln declared all enslaved persons free, Major General Gordon Granger and Union Army troops enforced the Emancipation Proclamation and freed the last enslaved black Americans. And whereas, free from the bondage, which immorally deprived them of human dignity, their long overdue emancipation was celebrated on June 19, Juneteenth. And this year marks the 160th year of Juneteenth, the oldest known celebration commemorating the abolishment of slavery in the United States. And whereas, this nationally recognized holiday is an opportunity to celebrate human freedom, reflect on the grievous and ongoing legacy of slavery, and rededicate ourselves to rooting out systemic racism that continues to plague our society as we strive to deliver the full promise of freedom and equality for all Americans. And whereas, as we celebrate Juneteenth, let us recommit ourselves to the work of equity, equality, and justice, remind ourselves of the centuries of struggle, courage, and hope that have brought us to this time of progress and possibility, and ensure that the events of 1865 are not forgotten. Now therefore, I, Mayor Tim Bussie, do hereby proclaim and do hereby proclaim June 19, 2025, as Juneteenth in the city of Bloomington dated this second day of June 2025. Whenever I read this proclamation and reflect back on, you know, June 19, 1865, that it took Union troops to enforce a law that had been in effect for two years, it's immoral and appalling to me that it even happened, and it makes it even more appropriate that a celebration of this type take place because it is a worthy celebration, and it's something that we all need to celebrate, that this happened, and it happened in a terrible way, but in a lot of ways, it strengthens it because it shows that it will prevail, righteousness will prevail. Pastor Sam, I'm going to invite you up, my friend.
Okay, now, we had to be out here by about 10 o'clock. Thank you. I'll make it brief, brief, brief. First of all, I just want to thank Mayor Tim and the city of Bloomington for supporting us as we looked at this three years ago, and they wholeheartedly bought into the idea of doing one without any hesitation, any upthing, front, anything looking nothing other than to share and to celebrate with us, the Juneteenth. I want to thank the team that's behind me, that we put this together and made it happen. And I'm looking hoping that some of you guys will show up at our celebration from 12:00 to 5:00 on June 21. I love Bloomington. I love the workers in Bloomington. I've received nothing but gracious, gracious gifts and ability, and I thank you guys so much.
Very good. Lauren, anybody else?
Well, same regards. I want to thank the city of Bloomington and Mayor Tim Bussie and the city council for doing something that it took a lot of other people to realize it was hip or cool to do, and them jumping on board after the fact. Before, you know, the president even made it a national holiday, the mayor and the city council had decided to make it a thing in the city of Bloomington. And this is a great opportunity for us to—as a community, not just African-Americans, but an entire community of Bloomington to come together and show that there's no discrimination in the city of Bloomington. We work together, and we are all one people who are happy to be part of the city of Bloomington.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you.
I've got people in the—I've got to get everybody's face. There we go. Thank you.
Our final item under 2, item 2 is 2.5, the Blazing Star Award, which is a new award for the city of Bloomington. And I think Bernadette Gillespie is here and others—we're going to—and Brianna Bribum from Conservation Minnesota. Don't be shy. Again, this is one-time kind of thing.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Brianna Bembum, and I am the Public Engagement Director at Conservation Minnesota. For those of you who don't know what Conservation Minnesota is, we are a nonprofit organization committed to protecting the great outdoors. So, we do that through moving as quickly as possible towards solutions for climate change, clean air, clean water, and outdoor recreation for all. I'm here on behalf of Conservation Minnesota to present the city with our 2025 Blazing Star Award. The Blazing Star Award recognizes local governments that advance conservation, climate resilience, environmental protection, or outdoor recreation. We named this award after a plant of the same name that's native to Minnesota prairies and has characteristics that we want to celebrate through this award. It's adaptable, and it's environmentally friendly. This—excuse me—this year, we received 28 applications from local governments across the state, and Bloomington was selected as a winner for its innovation of the Home Energy Disclosure Reports to the Time of Sale Housing Evaluation Program. I've been told that each year, over 1,500 homes are sold in Bloomington, and now those buyers are empowered with the vital information about energy efficiency that they need, and they're connected directly to resources that can make their homes more sustainable and affordable. On a personal note, I just bought my first home two weeks ago, unfortunately not in Bloomington, which—this is making me regret that decision. But I was reflecting, as I was going through the process, of how helpful something like this would have been for a new homeowner. And I think one of our judges on the Blazing Star panel said, every city should have this, and I agree. So, that's why I would like to present you with the 2025 Blazing Star Award. Congratulations.
Moving on in the agenda, council, up next is our consent business. Councilmember Carter with our 21-item consent calendar. Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. Thank you, Mayor. So, yes, I have the consent agenda. I have heard that I need to hold item 3.15, and then I will also be holding item 3.1. Are there any other holds? All right. So, with that, I would move to approve items 3.2 through 3.14 and 3.16 through 3.21.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Carter, second by Councilmember Loman, to accept tonight's consent business as stated. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7-0. Why don't we start with 3.15? If we couldn't, we'll double back to 3.1 to finish up.
That's Councilmember Nelson.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Councilmember Carter and Mayor. I'll be very quick. I opposed this previously, and I still oppose the certification. I'm very much in favor of the sustainability initiatives. I just don't support the spending of money for the certification part itself, so. We named this award after a plant of the same name that's native to Minnesota prairies and has characteristics that we want to celebrate through this award. It's adaptable and it's environmentally friendly. This, excuse me, this year we received twenty-eight applications from local governments across the state. And Bloomington was selected as a winner for its innovation of the home energy disclosure reports to the Time of Sale Housing Evaluation Program. I've been told that each year over fifteen hundred homes are sold in Bloomington. And now those buyers are empowered with the vital information about energy efficiency that they need. And they're connected directly to resources that can make their homes more sustainable and affordable. On a personal note, I just bought my first home two weeks ago, unfortunately not in Bloomington, which this is making me regret that decision. But I was reflecting as I was going through the process of how helpful something like this would have been for a new homeowner. And I think one of our judges on the Blazing Star panel said every, every city should have this, and I agree. So that's why I would like to present you with the two thousand and twenty-five Blazing Star Award. Congratulations.
Moving on in the agenda, council, up next is our consent business. Councilmember Carter with our twenty-one item consent calendar. Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. Thank you, Mayor. So yes, I have the consent agenda. I have heard that I need to hold item three point one five. And then I will also be holding item three point one. Are there any other holds? All right. So with that, I would move to approve items three point two through three point one four and three point one six through three point two one.
Second, motion by councilmember Carter, second by councilmember Loman to accept tonight's consent business as stated. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Why don't we start with three point one five? If we couldn't, we'll double back to three point one to finish up.
That's councilmember Nelson.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, councilmember Carter and Mayor. I'll be very quick. I oppose this previously. And I still oppose the certification. I'm very much in favor of the sustainability initiatives. I just don't support the spending of money for the certification part itself. So as, as I did previously, I will not support this item.
Thank you, councilmember Nelson.
That was nice, right after our Blazing Star Award.
Timing is everything, councilmember. Council, any other comments on this? Councilmember Rebus.
I'm just going to go piggyback on his comments without adding anything else to it. I just.
Very good.
All right, well, with that, I make the motion. So I'd move to authorize the mayor and interim city manager to execute a First Amendment to the Services Agreement for Hamel Green and Abrahamson, Inc. for lead sustainability certified design, registration fees, and review fees for the Community Health and Wellness Center for an added amount of three hundred and ten thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars for a total contract not to exceed amount of five million, six hundred and eighty-four thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars.
Motion by councilmember Carter, second by councilmember DeLisandro to accept item three point one five in tonight's consent business as stated. No further council discussion on this? There is council discussion. It's councilmember DeLisandro.
If you don't, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, I, I understand the sentiment behind the dissent tonight. But I do think it's important that people understand, for those of us who, I'll speak for myself, for those of us who are planning to support this, that the money is not the point. I mean, yes, it costs something to do it, and I understand that. And I, and I think that that's because there's a rigor to certifications. I care, for example, that somebody has, I don't know, an M.D. when they tell me what my health status is. I care that, that, that there's a J.D. behind the name of somebody who's going to represent me in a court decision, for example. There's a reason that we ask for a higher level of scrutiny on certain things, and we support that with a nomenclature and a name. And that's because we want that rigor to be applied there. Now, whether that rigor is applied there or not, we could probably self-identify that and probably shake our own hands. But it says something to the community as well as to other folks, in my opinion, this is just my opinion, that, that, that it is being held to a standard that has been recognized by professionals in the industry worldwide as a standard to, to, to go for. So that's why I'm supporting it. No, no, I completely understand the reasons why people don't, and I understand that completely. So I, I just wanted to make sure that people understood that the reason behind why I plan to say yes to this. Thanks.
Thank you, councilmember DeLisandro. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick note, just, just a quick rebuttal. So this is an extension of the firm that we already hired. We already have those qualified people doing the design work. And this is simply costs associated with filing of fees and of the certification process itself, from what I was able to understand. In general, I totally agree with councilmember DeLisandro that we should be very thorough in ensuring that we do things the correct way and making sure professionals look at that. I'm just confident that our architectural and engineering team that we've already hired are up to that task. So, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Any further council comments on this? Hearing none. We've got a motion and a second to approve item three point fifteen on the table. Calling the question, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five-two with councilmembers Rebus and Nelson in the negative. Thank you very much, councilmember Carter. Back to item three point one.
Yes, so, excuse me, so three point one is an item to accept donations. So we have a very engaged community, and we also have a very generous community. So we have many donations to report from different community members and organizations. I want to thank Norman Dale Community College for, I believe this is a sponsorship of the Juneteenth Celebration of one thousand dollars, which is very generous of them. I also want to share that the Bloomington Fast Pitch Association and Toro Company both donated fifty thousand dollars each for the reinvestment into Dred Scott Fields Three and Four. So huge, huge donations, and many thanks to them. And then we had several, as we do every time, several donations to our police department. I do want to shout out Girl Scout Troop nineteen oh five one for their Girl Scout cookie donation, and I'm guessing that the police officers very much enjoyed that. We had a couple of donations from Bundles of Love to our public health department, so newborn bundles. We had a donation from Knights of Columbus for small equipment donation. And then we had many, many donations for our Early Childhood Expo that was on April twenty-sixth. And so just want to express thanks on behalf of the city council and city staff, and would ask staff to write the appropriate thank yous. So thank you.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Motion by councilmember Carter, second by councilmember DeLisandro to accept the donations to the city of Bloomington as stated in item three point one. Council, any conversation on this? I would echo your statements, councilmember Carter. We have a very generous community here in so many different ways. And so thank you to all who have, whose name is on the list, and so many others whose name is not on that list for the work that they do and the contributions that they make to the city of Bloomington. We've got a motion and a second on item three point one. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Thank you, councilmember Carter. We're going to move on to item four on our agenda, our hearings, resolutions, and ordinances. And we are going to start with item four point one, a public hearing regarding the Phase One Small Business Codes and Processes ordinance. Dakota Caston Day is back, Planning Superintendent, to lead us for this one. Good evening.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. So I just wanted to summarize kind of the four topic areas for our Phase One Small Business Ordinance, and then summarize the Planning Commission discussion as well. As we're getting the slides up, I'll just say that there were, we're covering odor mitigation standards, parking flexibility measures, roof-mounted mechanical equipment screening, and then changes to exterior building material standards. At our study session earlier in January, there was also a pretty lengthy discussion about our trash enclosure standards. But I think through both the Planning Commission and City Council, that was probably the item that had the least amount of consensus in some direction. And so staff will be bringing that back as a second phase later this year. Just summarize, let's see, for the odor mitigation, the proposed ordinance would reduce the separation distance required for odor mitigation from two hundred and fifty feet to one hundred and fifty feet. And then also further clarify, the measurement would be from the exhaust location to the nearest residential dwelling. And the intent there was just to have a more clear measurement and rationale for requiring odor mitigation. It would also designate the city building official to approve odor mitigation systems and remove a certification requirement from an engineer. And there again, it's just trying to reduce cost and process for business owners. A lot of engineers are hesitant to kind of sign off on the system just because you can't one hundred percent mitigate odor. But so, and our building official and our plan review staff already review these systems as part of trade permits and are familiar with the requirements and the, the standards that are needed. And these systems are still designed by an engineer. We're just not, this ordinance would no longer require a formal sign off and just allow our building official to sign off on that. And then finally, it would remove the odor mitigation requirement for type-two hoods. So these typically deal with more steam, but would still require odor mitigation for type-one hoods. And those deal with grease and more heavy odors. Just to summarize the parking flexibility requirements, the city already has six parking flexibility measures that businesses can use to reduce their required minimum parking standard. However, the approval for those parking flexibility kind of varies and doesn't align with previous work that we've done to streamline our development review. And so this ordinance would just establish that whatever entity is approving the site plan would approve the parking flexibility, just so we avoid a situation where the Planning Commission maybe is approving the site plan, but currently in our code, it might say the council has to approve the parking flexibility. And so just wanting again to be more efficient and make sure we're not creating extra review where it's not necessarily needed. And then this ordinance would also establish a seventh parking flexibility measure to allow existing commercial or industrial buildings or tenant spaces that are ten thousand square feet or less to have a twenty-five percent reduction in their required parking. The caveat with that is that staff have to make a determination that it is a constrained site. And so that they wouldn't actually be able to physically build new code-compliant parking on their lot. And we have a lot of older buildings, smaller buildings in the city that oftentimes that parking minimum can become a hang-up. And so we just want to try to create some flexibility for folks to be able to reuse existing buildings in the city. For rooftop screening, there's just a clarification that screening would be required when it's visible from the ground level of the adjacent sidewalk and public street. And then the ordinance would also exempt exhaust pipes from screening. And the, again, the rationale there is oftentimes exhaust pipes are fairly tall and can be quite expensive or difficult to screen. And so staff felt that it doesn't quite meet a cost-benefit analysis and doesn't necessarily, you know, when the screening is that tall, is it really screening something if the screening itself is kind of really large and, and kind of difficult to, to build? And then on the fourth topic of exterior building materials, the proposed ordinance would allow the coating of certain primary materials, mainly brick and stucco. And then it would also establish building maintenance standards from our International Property Maintenance Code to ensure that properly maintained painted surfaces, surfaces are enforced in the city. And then there's also some clarification on accepted materials. So we revised some definitions and put our primary and secondary materials that are allowed in tables and kind of reorganized our exterior material standards a little bit to make it easier for staff to read, as well as architects and business owners to be able to find that information relatively easy. And then, of course, with any code amendment, there's often kind of just minor cleanup items, so these aren't really policy things. But there was just some minor language adjustments from odor suppression to odor mitigation. Of course, when you change something in one section, there's probably another section that references it. So we just want to make sure we have consistent language across our code. And then removing any subsections or definitions that are no longer relevant for the changes. One item I just wanted to highlight from the Planning Commission discussion was there was one item that they recommended not be included in the ordinance. So it's not in the ordinance that was part of the packet. And that related to the primary and secondary building material ratio. So currently, the city requires a minimum of eighty-five percent of each building facade to be some kind of primary material. And then a maximum fifteen percent of a secondary material, so an eighty-five, fifteen ratio. Staff had proposed a sixty-five, thirty-five ratio. And then on a six-to-one vote, the Planning Commission recommended to keep the existing eighty-five, fifteen ratio. Staff, however, did just want to acknowledge that during the study session with the council, that there weren't a ton of questions around this topic. And it seemed like there was general support for a sixty-five, thirty-five ratio. So we do have an alternative motion if the council is interested at all in changing that ratio. And staff also, I should say, felt it was an easy enough change that we could make if you wanted to do that, that change. It wasn't super involved to, to change the number. So that's why we're offering that. But again, that's up to the council if you want to stick with the Planning Commission recommendation or go to sixty-five, thirty-five, seventy-five, twenty-five, whatever that, that might be. So on the screen here is the Planning Commission and staff recommendation. Again, that would maintain the existing eighty-five, fifteen ratio. And then we have our summary publication motion there as well. And then if, if is needed, we have the alternative motion language there for you as well. So happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Caston Day. Council, any questions here about the presentation? Councilmember Loman.
Thank you for raising that, that point from the Planning Commission. And I can't recall what, what had happened in that period of time, but I just wanted to be sure that, because we've, we've traditionally tried to listen to our Planning Commission when, when that came about. And, and I appreciate your response that you had earlier to that. And I'm not sure if there's anything else you want to add to that, because I just wanted to just be sure. So I think the, the main thing is, is that I think they saw that that wasn't really a part of, you know, of small businesses that wouldn't necessarily help them. Although, I mean, since we've already, in a sense, you know, this is an opportunity to do this, this may be an opportunity to get it done for businesses broadly.
Yeah, Mayor, councilmember Loman, I guess maybe I'll just add a little bit from kind of the response I sent earlier that, yeah, I would say the, the reason, I guess, this kind of got included in the ordinance originally was just kind of direct feedback that we heard from architects that we had talked with, that they felt the eighty-five, fifteen ratio was pretty high compared to area cities. And looking at some surrounding cities, a lot of them do a sixty-five, thirty-five ratio. I think Eden Prairie does a seventy-five, twenty-five. And so staff just wanted to kind of present that for Planning Commission and City Council feedback. And yeah, I would say the Planning Commission, most of their concern was maybe that this would only benefit larger businesses and not so much small businesses. And I, I think for staff, I think there's a little nuance to, to that, depending on how you're defining small business. If you're talking about a small building versus a business that maybe has, you know, few staff members. And that while a lot of businesses just lease a space and don't own their building or have a lot of control over exterior materials, so they won't necessarily directly benefit from a change. There are still a fair number of businesses that do own their building and have control over their exterior materials. And staff felt adjusting the ratio could provide better flexibility for them for some different materials that, that they would like to see, whether it's like based on their branding standards or, or things like that. So I think that's kind of a summary of PC and staff.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember, oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Carter, follow up, and then we'll get to councilmember DeLisandro.
Can you pull up the comparison slide?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I just think it'd be helpful to see how we do compare to other cities.
Yeah, sorry.
Because I, I know.
I use my mouse on my computer, but I have to use the clicker.
Oh, yeah, no worries, no worries. I know we have heard from business owners and people in the development community that sometimes Bloomington does have more rigorous standards. So I do appreciate staff seeking that input from architects and developers, developers, people who work with developers. So thank you for sharing this, and I think it's helpful context. I do appreciate the feedback from the Planning Commission. I also just recognize that you have the, the day-to-day experience hearing from people who are applying for, you know, different projects. So, thank you.
Councilmember DeLisandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mine's related to the same topic area. Can, can, can you provide the justification for why we care about this at all? Sometimes I just, I don't know enough to wonder why we would have such an opinion on facades. It seems like of all the things we could care about, that would not be one of them, in my opinion. But there's obviously a reason for it because so many cities have it. So just help, help understand that so that the public knows why we, why we even have a recommendation in the first place.
Sure, yeah. Mayor, councilmember DeLisandro. I would say, I guess on the zoning code standpoint of it, some of it is aesthetic, just like wanting to make sure we have some aesthetic standards for, for buildings. There are building code requirements as well that would play into allowable materials. But I think the core of it is just ensuring that we have kind of, I guess, recognizable and suitable construction materials to make sure that buildings are safe and that they last. And so I think that's where a lot of that distinction between primary and secondary is the primary materials are typically, I guess, maybe more durable materials is one way to think about it. And then secondary are still good materials, but maybe a little bit more cost-effective and still can give you that aesthetic benefit that you see. So I don't know if that's helpful a little bit.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Councilmember Loman.
Just one other thing I wanted to mention. I remember when I was an intern in planning, Bob Hallbaker used to always say that one of the reasons why we have these high standards is that it really helped to bring up the, you know, the quality of the city itself. And that was kind of the historical rationale behind some of these standards that were different, that differentiated Bloomington from other, from other, from other cities.
Councilmember Rebus, and then councilmember Nelson. Councilmember Rebus. And we're, we're in questions right now, folks. We're not offering, we're not leaning into things here. We're offering, we're asking questions.
Yeah, I just, my, my question is, why are we not the leading city? Why are we comparing ourselves to everybody else instead of being the ones that lead? In a way, we want to do whatever other city around us does. I mean, why do we function that way? Everything that we try to do, we're always comparing ourselves. Everything that we try to do, we're always comparing ourselves to what the next city is doing. I wonder why that is.
Sure.
Can you give me an answer to that?
Sure, yeah. Mayor, Councilmember Rivas, I would say we often do a city comparison. I think it's just kind of helpful to understand where Bloomington fits in relation to a lot of communities surrounding Bloomington. While every city is certainly unique and wants to have some different standards to kind of distinguish themselves and in general, most cities in the region kind of function the same and, you know, they have the same developers and kind of what's, I guess, driven by the market in terms of construction and in materials is pretty similar across communities here in the region, so I think it's just another data point that you can use to, as in kind of your judgment on what you want to do. And so I think it's just, you know, we're not using this as like the primary example, but it's just one data point of many that you can have just to kind of compare where you are.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. With regards to the exterior facades, the ratio applies to all, let's just say, four sides or all sides of a building? Is that accurate?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, that is correct.
Was there consideration of the backside, the sides, if they weren't adjacent to streets? I think we do something similar on commercial residential, like apartments, so.
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, yeah, currently in our Opportunity Housing Ordinance, if a residential multifamily building provides a certain level of affordability, we do have that provision that any facade that doesn't face a public street can have a higher ratio of secondary materials. We didn't necessarily look at that as part of this ordinance on the residential, just because that's a very popular incentive and the OHO is going through its kind of next nexus in analysis, so we didn't want to kind of make any changes with that until that study was done. And then because of that, we didn't really look at it on commercial or industrial buildings and a lot of cities that do have that requirement have, follow more of a form-based code and we just currently don't have that form-based code and so it was just one of those things, I guess, for ease that we didn't present that here in this ordinance.
With regards to the odor portion of this, if there was a restaurant, because I think that's where odors would apply, that used to have to have the odor mitigation or suppression, mitigation, I think, no, would they be able to modify their system? Because I know that you have a large upfront cost, but you have a significant annual cost in terms of filters and things like that, so if they were in between the 150 and the 200, would they now be able to maybe make some changes to save themselves long-term costs?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, I am not sure, so I don't want to give incorrect information off the cuff. I don't know, Planning Manager Johnson might have some insight into some of that. He wrote kind of that section, so, sorry.
Thank you, Dakota. Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, good to see you. The one caveat, I would say yes, generally that they could adjust their operations. The one thing we would need to evaluate with any development approvals, we would need to study the conditions of approval that were established at the time and we would always, usually if it's complex, we would do so with legal to make sure that we're following a land use law and a proper approach there, but assuming that it was compliant with current code, they could proceed with some of those operational changes. Yep.
Good, thank you. My last question, so painted services, what is our enforcement mechanism? And I'll be honest, the part about I bring this up is because of that velveline at Old Shakopee Road in France and like, you know, we allow for that. I know we've had discussions in the past about why we don't allow that. There was, I think, a bank or something that wanted to do it and we, you know, we didn't allow for it. And so there, because of the concerns of long-term maintenance, so how do we actually enforce that if we're going to allow for those types of surfaces? And then how do we do that with some buildings that don't look great, but maybe near Old Shakopee in France?
Sure. Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, I would say, so currently, because we don't allow coating on new surfaces, the current policy is that any surface that has been coated, I think before 2001 or whatever the date is, can continue to be recoded, but we know we run into issues or we're aware of places that have illegally coated or painted surfaces and it does put us in kind of a tough spot because you really, to do that, would have to get them to remove the paint or whether that's sandblasting or whatever that might look like and it can just kind of create an awkward situation and trying to keep the relationship with the business and wanting to work with them, but also, you know, trying to apply our standards. So what I would say with the proposed ordinance is we do more explicitly list maintenance standards in, from the International Property Maintenance Code that our environmental health staff can use to then issue correction notices to get people to comply or if it is chipping paint and those kinds of things, there's more clear language in there that they can point to, to write an enforcement action and get them to clean it up and repaint it and make it look nicer. Yeah.
Council, any other questions before we dive into our public hearing here? All right, seeing no hands going up.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Caston. Don't go far. We will open the public hearing on item 4.1. This is a public hearing regarding Phase One Small Business Codes and Processes Ordinance. Anyone in the council chambers wishing to speak to item 4.1 this evening? Please come on forward. As you're coming forward, the way we do this, you'll have five minutes and you've got the shot clock on the wall to keep track of things, if you could state your name and when you get to five minutes, I will say thank you, so just so you know.
Thanks.
All right, please go ahead.
Hi, guys. Thank you, Mayor Bussi and the council members. I'm Katie Ross. I own the Arts Creative on the West Side of Bloomington and I'm just, I noticed one of the things, talking about rooftop equipment and I'm personally dealing with some rooftop equipment issues with a red-tagged unit and then whose responsibility it is to replace or repair it and whether or not it is repairable and then the standards and stuff like that. So I've been working with a lot of support through Elway Henepin. I have a lawyer kind of helping me read through my lease and stuff like that. Currently, me and my landlord are both just sending letters through our lawyers, but really, I think I'm here mostly to advocate because this current landlord has bought up another strip on 90th and France and it's just come to my attention with all the relationships I've built with my little block, the strip mall that I'm working at, that it's, I'm getting a lot of, yeah, that's normal and then I want to know why isn't it normal? And I've built a relationship with Mary at West Side Perk and she happens to also open that place of Perk Up Kitchen and she's told me that it's a clear difference between landlords and the support and all the other kind of stuff and so I'm wondering, you know, as a problem solver, how do we advocate for more positive relationships, more symbiotic relationships with these landlords and business owners and have less of those stories of like, yeah, that's normal for a small business to kind of get stuck in there? So, thanks for hearing me.
And thank you and I just, I do, typically we'd wait until the end to respond, but I want to let you know, because I think you know this, we've had this conversation, but especially what we're talking about tonight doesn't necessarily go into the whole landlord PC relationships and what the responsibilities might be. I understand what you're saying and I saw staff furiously taking notes as you were talking and it may be something we address in the future, but as it relates to what we're talking about tonight, there isn't a, there isn't a bright line connection between the issues that you're having and what we're discussing.
No, for sure and I think it's more just on the preventative, moving forward, thinking about it, like that there's more people in that consideration.
Appreciate that. Thanks for speaking tonight. Appreciate it. Anyone else wish to speak this evening? Caitlin, do we have anyone on the phone?
Mayor, there is no one on the phone.
Last call for anyone in the chambers. Council, no one in the chambers coming forward, no one on the phone wishing to speak to item 4.1. I would look for a motion to close the public hearing on item 4.1 this evening.
So moved. Say it.
Motion by Councilmember Loman, second by Councilmember Muw to close the public hearing on item 4.1. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0 closing the public hearing. So, Council, thoughts on this? I think for the most part, as I look through it, I think the rooftop screening issue was one that we had the conversation about and I know there was the, we were pretty much in alignment with what the planning commission was talking about. To Councilmember, a couple, Councilmember Nelson's comments and a couple of other comments regarding the exterior materials, I think we did support the painting. Planning commission obviously was a little bit in between and then the parking flexibility and the odor mitigation, I don't think there were issues there at all. So I think the question between, that I've been hearing are the exterior materials, both the painting and the coating, but also that mix, that 85-20 or 85-15 mix. And I mean, from my standpoint, I understand the comments, Councilmember DeLisandro, I think when you brought up the question, you know, why do we have this in the first place? And I think, I appreciated Mr. Caston Day's response that it's a combination of things, but more than anything, I think it's a, it's a style and look and standard that I think we expect and have built the city around and I think it's telling without, you know, without dunking on our neighbors to the north, it's telling that our neighbors in Blaine were 50-50 because I think if you drive through Blaine, you see an entirely different type of building structure, facade structure, it just looks different as you drive your way up Central Avenue and around the city of Blaine. So I don't know, I appreciate the changes that have been suggested in terms of fume hoods and parking and so on, because I think they do benefit the small business owner and they can help in a lot of ways. I'm not supportive of messing around with our exterior surfaces ratio primarily because that's what people will notice. You know, the rooftop screening may or may not be noticed by neighbors, may or may not be noticed by anybody, but I think if we wake our way back on exterior standards, I think it would be noticed and it would be noticeable. So I'm not in favor of those changes as we looked at, as we talked about earlier, not in favor of the staff recommendation there. Councilmember DeLisandro?
Sure, Mr. Mayor. So I think you're right, I mean, I'm most looking forward to seeing the stuff around grease interceptors and things like that and it's not in here, so I'll just hold myself ready for that stuff, because that's my big pressing issue at the moment on some of those things. As it relates to the screenings and everything, I agree. I think everybody's in agreement on that as it relates to the report and planning commission. I have a different point of view on the exterior surface stuff. I think I oftentimes think that we let perfect get in the way of good here in some of these ordinances and all. You know, if we know or we believe strongly, and maybe we don't have the evidence either way, that these kinds of, these kinds of standards being as high as they are and they are out, we are an outlier, whether that's good or bad, you can have that conversation, but we are an outlier compared to anywhere around us and, you know, I'm not suggesting that, I've never lived in Blaine, I have no idea what that looks like, but I'm not going to, you have the luxury of disparaging our neighbors to the north, I maybe don't, but I guess, what do we want, right? I'm always looking for the outcomes we're trying to achieve and if the outcome we're trying to achieve is that more small businesses want to come and do business here in Bloomington, then I don't know why we would make it hard for them and that's the lens through which I look at all of this. And so if we're, if we want somebody to buy that place at Shakopee and France and say, and do something with it, why don't we get out of their way and let them do that to at least some degree? That's the kind of the way I think about it. If the, in the same way that I have argued in the past, sitting from here, that, you know, that we're placing the burden on the small business and this might get to what our friends from the Arts Creative are saying, you know, putting the burden on the small business to get to compliance with us as opposed to working with the developers and the owners of these large complexes to build to suit so that they can attract these businesses seems antithetical to me and so I will always be advocating for making it more easy for small business owners to go in and take advantage of an opportunity that doesn't necessarily come along all the time for, you know, to buy a building and to own a building and to make it their own without putting so much constraint on them that it, we've made it, we've made it challenging. And I guess the other thing I'll say is just that like, I'm not, I don't necessarily like the aesthetic. I mean, is it, you know, those things are nice and everything, but what if I wanted to do something different? What if, what if I, as a small business owner, for example, who owned a coffee shop or whatever, who wanted to make the entire exterior of my property covered in natural grasses or natural, you know, material or whatever, because it's the aesthetic I want to achieve? We just, I don't know, we get in the way of some of that creativity when we do stuff like this and at that ratio, the least we could do would maybe make it more flexible in my opinion. So that's kind of where I stand on it and hopefully that's pretty consistent with where I've been on most of my things anyway. I'd be very happy if I, I would walk into a place that's moss-covered with a gray water system in a heartbeat, right, over, if it meant that we've got a business that's doing sustainable work and meaningful work here in the city of Bloomington more quickly than it could otherwise and so I want us to be sure we're focused on outcomes and what the city looks like to me is not as important as can the city support small businesses. That doesn't mean it's not important, it's just not as important, so can we get out of the way if it is where my head's at? So I would be okay if we wanted to bring up, to vote on that. It may not pass today, but I'd be open to making the motion about including that. Thanks.
Thank you. Others? Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I tend to agree with Councilmember DeLisandro with regards to the exterior facades. I would add in there, I would look for additional at some point reductions on the back of them and stuff like that where, you know, they're not public facing and bluntly, who cares? As long as they're maintained. And if we have those standards, I'm fine with that. I know later in the evening, we're going to talk about commercial nodes. Frankly, a lot of these exteriors have to do with commercial nodes. We have a lot of old commercial nodes. I don't know when this ordinance first went into effect, but my guess is a lot of those were built prior to these standards and don't meet them and yet they're still there, they're still part of the community, people still enjoy the businesses that are at them, you know, the whole thing hasn't fallen down and collapsed yet, so I would be supportive of additional flexibility with regards to that. I think all of my other questions were answered there, so I just, I appreciate the work that staff did, I think, and the planning commission, I think they came forth with good recommendations and the one that I would support from staff is the flexibility on the exteriors.
Thank you, Councilmember. Yep. Councilmember what?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll jump on this train too. I completely understand and see the viewpoint of the conversation the planning commission had regarding the ratio for external materials, but how I see it is our commercial nodes, our districts are due for redevelopment and that will be happening in the next 10, 15, 20 years and as I've said many times up here, like I support letting the market decide and having that flexibility with the ideal and hope that those savings from those developers get passed on to our small business owners. Who knows if they do or not, but given the flexibility and the opportunity to do that, at least we have a chance. So I fully understand where the planning commission came for it in the short term or totally see that it really doesn't change a whole lot, but in the long term, I do see the benefit of reducing that ratio for Bloomington to move into the future.
So seeing, listening to the conversation here, I appreciate Councilmember DeLisandro, perhaps, I mean, we agree on everything else, perhaps you can make the motion, the second motion that was included in the packet and change the proposed primary and secondary material ratios to be more in line with the staff recommendation and we can move forward with that vote, see where that goes and.
Okay. Okay, gotcha. Yes, I can do that. So if we're ready for that, I'll make the motion to adopt an ordinance modifying exterior building material and coating standards, odor mitigation requirements, flexibility measures for off-street parking and rooftop mechanical equipment standards, thereby amending Chapter 9, 10, and 21 of the city code, striking the 85%, 15% primary to secondary exterior material ratio and inserting. exterior, exterior material ratio, and inserting a, and I guess we didn't talk about that, but I'm, we going for the sixty-five thirty-five? Okay. Sixty-five thirty-five, primary to secondary exterior material ratio. Did I get that right?
No, no.
Huh? Sixty-five thirty-five?
Sixty-five thirty-five, that equals a hundred.
That's math.
Math is hard.
Seventy-five twenty-five or sixty-five thirty-five? But we want sixty-five.
I think staff recommended sixty-five thirty.
Yes, okay, very good. All right. I think I got all that out there.
Yep.
Anybody want to second it?
Second.
We have a motion by councilmember DeLisandro, a second by councilmember Muah, to adopt this ordinance as stated. And in particular, it would be striking the eighty-five fifteen primary to secondary exterior ratio and inserting a sixty-five thirty-five primary to secondary exterior ratio. Any conversation on this? Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. So a question for staff. Is there anything related to the materials? Is there anything related to the longevity? Because I feel like, I'm thinking back years and years ago, gosh, I think councilmember Belogo was on council, and we were having a conversation around exterior materials. And I thought there was something kind of around just like the quality and the, the lifetime of those kind of materials. And are we sacrificing kind of the longer term durability? And I, I'll be honest, I don't really have strong feelings about this one. I'm mostly fine with reducing it, but I guess that is just one question that I have lingering.
Mr. Caston Day?
Yeah, Mayor, councilmember Carter. Yeah, so I was just talking with planning manager Johnson really quick. So yeah, I would say that on those secondary materials, I don't think it's really jeopardizing durability. They're still accepted materials, you know, it still has to meet Minnesota State Building Code, and that gets reviewed to ensure it's a safe and durable building. Maybe some slight differences on, like LP smart side and some of those other materials. It might be more of a twenty-year warranty versus a thirty-year warranty on some of those materials. But they still, they still have a warranty that they follow and still have to be properly maintained, which is really the, the key to all of this. So most of those secondary materials are all pretty common, modern construction materials. And I don't think you'd be sacrificing a ton of durability by allowing more secondary materials.
Other questions, comments? We've got a motion and a second on the table. Do we have any other questions and comments on it? Councilmember Rivas?
Just to add to, councilmember Muah, how do we guarantee that the savings that this will be providing to the developers is transferred to the actual user? If anybody can answer that question, I guess.
Mayor, councilmember Rivas, the city, there's no ordinance in place that can guarantee that any potential cost savings, depending on the palette of materials that you utilize, can be passed on to the small business. There's nothing on the books that would require that. One thing I will say that wasn't part of the discussion as part of this is that, as Dakota mentioned, we did get comments back from architects in the area that we engage with as part of this process about our ratio. But if I can also just add one more data point in terms of how it translates to an actual business in Bloomington with respect to some of our shopping centers, that we have had some scenarios, and this relates to the painting issue too, who want to refresh the storefront to match their brand or their business. And if a particular elevation was already maxed out in terms of the amount of secondary materials that it couldn't have, to change the storefront, it would have had to add more primary materials. Not a huge deal, maybe some additional cost, but there actually is less color palette in some of those materials, there's less design choices in some of those materials. So I think it just adds some of the rigidity. And we didn't talk about, and I know that's a little bit off topic of the direct question, we can't pass on the cost savings, but I think what these changes have the potential to do is just add more design flexibility to the particular business, if that makes sense.
I'll be with the answers. Thank you.
Yep. All right, council. Any final questions? We have a motion and a second on the table. Everybody's clear on the motion? If not, okay, everybody's clear on the motion? All those in favor of the motion offered on item four point one, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Me. We got, the motion carries five to two with Bussie and Lowman in opposition. Very good. Councilmember DeLisandro, summary publication, please. Yes, please.
Yes, sir. Move to adopt a resolution authorizing summary publication of an ordinance updating various performance standards for small business, thereby amending chapters nine, ten, and twenty-one of the city code.
Motion by councilmember DeLisandro, second by councilmember Muah, for summary publication of item four point one. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Mr. Caston Day. Thanks, extend the, thanks to the rest of the planning staff also. I know we're, we're making progress on this, and I think it's, it's good progress. So well done, thank you. Item four point two is our second public hearing. This is regarding chapter five of the Bloomington City Charter. And item four point three, obviously related as well, that's related to chapter six of the Bloomington City Charter. City Attorney Melissa Manderscheid is going to lead us through this. Good evening.
Thank you, mayor members. So tonight, we have two charter amendments. We, we spoke about them a couple of weeks ago. And this is a part of a longer process that the Charter Commission has been going through related to reviewing each section of the city charter and analyzing, is it working? What do, do we understand it, asking questions? And so this past year, the Charter Commission looked at sections, or excuse me, chapters four, five, and six. And out of that conversation, and, and the work that we do with staff to analyze our charter each year, there came amendments to chapter six and to chapter five. This item four point two is chapter five. And we all have been through this process before and probably recall that there are several different ways that you can officially amend the charter. The one that's being recommended tonight is the amendment by ordinance, which is listed in the agenda item on page one seventy-one. This particular approach requires a public hearing, as well as publication of the entire language of the proposed ordinance, ordinance, which is the amending the charter in the paper. We also put it on our city website. And it has a delayed effective date of ninety days after the public hearing in, in passage. There is also the opportunity for a petition to come in, in the middle of that ninety-day publication period, to undo the ordinance that was acted on by the council. So you have a timeline in your agenda item, as well as the actual language of the ordinance, the affidavit of publication, the resolution that came to you earlier from the Charter Commission, and then a copy of the state law. We're going to do these as two separate agenda items, and I'll talk about the substance of each of them separately. But I also, before I do that, I want to just let the council know that the chair of the Charter Commission is also with us tonight, and want to encourage him if he so desires to add anything to the introduction.
Steve Peterson, Chair of the Charter Commission. We started this process over four years of going and looking through the charter. And the item that's going to come up first here is kind of the first set of changes that we're making relating to that. We've been very careful to try to make changes that are not substantive changes, that are, that we think we can get seven votes to support on the council, although I'm looking here. We'll see if, we'll see if it happens with seven at some point here. But the, the goal of this is to try to bring forward something that's not controversial. And so we've been very specific about, we've had a lot of discussions where people like, what if we did this, or what if we did that? And that's not, that's not what this is about. And so I'm here primarily to answer questions.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. Thanks for being here tonight.
All right, just in time.
I'm here, I'm probably.
So as the chair alluded to, this particular approach to amend the charter requires unanimous seven-member vote of the, to pass the ordinance. So as the chair alluded to, this is a, this amendment to chapter five came out of discussion, and we also had the participation of the city clerk, who welcomed the change as well. Essentially, this chapter five is our, sort of the, the guts of what makes Bloomington a home real charter city, in that we have all three of the citizen powers of recall, initiative, and referendum. And what we learned when we were analyzing each section of chapter five, was that we had some inconsistencies, both in the naming of our sections, as well as an opportunity to improve the efficiency of the process. There is a, as you know, a petition that is created and circulated throughout the community and signed. And there are some affirmative duties of the city clerk to work with the five members of the, of the committees for each of those powers that I mentioned previously. So what this amendment does, this ordinance does, is create the same naming standard for each of those sections, so it's more obvious for the folks that are trying to use it. And then it also adds an email and a telephone address to facilitate that back and forth communication that is sometimes required in the process. The last thing that it did, that it does, is in section five point eleven, the referendum section. And one of the commissioners of the Charter Commission brought up for discussion that there is some potential ambiguity in the language of the actual form of petition in our charter. And there was quite a bit of discussion, and we ultimately suggested a change to that as well. So there is that all for your consideration. That particular language I just mentioned is on page one seventy-four of the packet. So again, these are clerical, and by clerical, I don't mean inconsequential, I mean, an attempt to make things more clear and assist with the administrative process. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I'm sure the chair is as well, and then move to a public hearing.
Council, any questions? Councilmember DeLisandro?
Thank you, and I apologize if I made you nervous earlier. I just wanted to, the one thing I noticed that I wanted to make sure I was clear on, it, it does look like now in all three areas, we are requiring the, these folks to be registered voters of in Bloomington. Was that ever in doubt, or was it just that the referendum petition didn't, didn't have that language in it? If I look at like five eleven, in the language that's crossed out, it didn't, it didn't explicitly require undersigned voters registered in Bloomington, and now it does. And I just want to be sure I understand, was that always the expectation? And it was, is that part of the cleanup? Or are we actively changing that particular implication?
Mayor members, that has always been there. If you look to the other boxes as well in the ordinance, you'll see very similar language. Submission to the voters registered in Bloomington for their approval, it was in the language that was struck, and it reappears in the new language. So that is a requirement that the clerk goes through and checks the petition each of the signatories.
Yes, I guess I'm, maybe I'm reading it incorrectly. It says, in, in the, in the redlined version, the, the information that's lined out, the undersigned petitioners, understanding the nature of the ordinance attached and believing it to be detrimental, blah, 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 that changes to the undersigned, undersigned voters registered in Bloomington. Now, I agree with you, it does say petition the council for its submission to a vote of voters registered in Bloomington for their approval or disapproval. But the petitioners, it looks like, in that language right now, it looks like we are clarifying that the petitioners in this have to be registered voters in Bloomington. And that's what I want to just clarify. That seems right. I, I agree with it. I just want to be sure that we're not, it, it's not a material change. Because it was always understood, we were just clarifying the language.
Ms. Manderscheid?
Mayor members, it was not intended to be a material change. That was always the understood. There was a desire, my recollection of the conversation at the Charter Commission was that there was a desire to have consistency between each of the petitions, the former petition, as well as following a similar cadence in the language. So my understanding was that there was not a desire to change the substance. Chair, anything you want to add?
Thank you. Other questions? All right. Don't go far, just in case we have additional questions afterward. Thank you for being here tonight. I will open this public hearing on item four point two. This is a public hearing regarding a charter amendment for chapter five of the Bloomington City Charter. Anyone in the council chambers wishing to speak to item four point two this evening? Caitlin, anyone on the phone?
Mayor, there's no one on the phone.
Last call for anybody in the chambers. Council, no one coming forward in the chambers, no one on the phone to speak to item four point two. I would look for a motion to close the public hearing on item four point two this evening.
So moved.
Motion by councilmember Lowman, second by councilmember DeLisandro, closing the public hearing on item four point two. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero, closing the public hearing. Council, thoughts on this? I think it's, was well explained, I thought, by Ms. Manderscheid and Mr. Peterson, the, the work that went into this and just the thought behind it to, again, not an inconsequential change, but a clarifying change, I think, to make things a bit clearer within our city charter, which is always a worthwhile endeavor, I believe. Any additional thoughts, comments, concerns? If not, council, I would look for action on item four point two this evening. Councilmember Muah.
I'll be doing that, Mayor. Move to adopt an ordinance, amending city charter sections five point zero five, five point one one, and five point one six, relating to initiative, referendum, and recall.
Motion by councilmember Muah, second by councilmember DeLisandro, to adopt an ordinance, amending city charter chapters, sections five point zero five, five point eleven, and five point one six, relating to initiative, referendum, and recall. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Which moves us on to item four point three, our second public hearing on our city charter. This regarding chapter six. Ms. Manderscheid?
All right, thank you, mayor members. This one is even more straightforward. This is in a, a very simple change. The term assistant city manager appears in a couple of locations in chapter six. And the more common use of that position title is shifting in the marketplace. And another conversation, excuse me, is that contagious? Goodness. Deputy, it's shifting to the use of, to be titled deputy city manager. It's a similar type of titling that we have in other departments as well. So because this particular title is committed to writing in the charter, it'll require an ordinance to make that change. The thing to note with regard to this particular title is that it appears in multiple other official city documents, our employment rules, our compensation plan, and other various types of documents. And so the intent and the goal of staff would be, if you all choose to move forward with this, to time the effective date of those complementary procedures and policies and whatnot with the effective date of this particular change. And then the other thing to note, just since I have my mic unmuted, is that there was a larger discussion in the Charter Commission related to these particular sections, six point oh six and six point oh seven. And there was some discussion about how the language is able to be understood. The Charter Commission decided not to move forward with that during this particular agenda item year. But it is possible that they may come back in future years with a, with an effort to clarify some sections. But just wanted to mention that in the event you were looking through the, the ordinance language and had a similar thought. Chair, you want to add anything more?
Chair?
Nothing to add.
Nothing to add. Council, questions on this? I just, clarifications, job title is the only thing changing, not responsibilities, not pay grade, not, and of course, business cards. But beyond that, nothing else changes. The jobs remain the same, it's simply the title change. Is that correct?
Chair and members, yes. The only change is the word assistant now becomes deputy city manager. And, and it is not effective for a ways into the future. But later in, in the early fall of 2025, if you choose to adopt this.
Thank you. Any additional question? Any additional questions, council? If not, thank you. We will open the public hearing on item four point three. This is a public hearing regarding a charter amendment on chapter six of the Bloomington City Code. Anyone in the council chambers wishing to speak to item four point three this evening? Caitlin, anyone on the phone wishing to chime in?
Mayor, there's no one on the phone.
Last chance for anyone in the chambers to speak. Council, no one coming forward in the chambers, no one on the phone wishing to speak to item four point three. I would look for a motion to close the public hearing on item four point three.
So moved. Second.
Motion by councilmember Muah, second by councilmember Lowman, closing the public hearing on item four point three. No further council discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Council, any questions on this? Clarifications, this one I think is even more straightforward than the first. Are we good? Council, I would look for motion, I would look for action on item four point three. Councilmember Muah.
I'll be doing that, Mayor. And move to adopt an ordinance, amending city charter sections six point zero three, six point zero six, and six point zero seven.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Mu, second by councilmember Lohman, to adopt an ordinance amending city charter sections 6.03, 06, and 07 relating to the administration of city affairs. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Ms. Manderscheid.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Chair, thank you so very much, and thank you for your work chairing the, the charter commission. It's, I know sometimes a big job, sometimes less than a big job, but appreciate the work that you do put into it and all the work that you've put in for the city of Bloomington over the years. Thanks much for being here tonight. Thanks. We move on, counsel, to our organizational business. And we are hitting just now eight o'clock, and so we've got to get through our organizational business to, to meet our nine o'clock adjournment deadline. And I think we should be able to do that. Our first update is no action, and this is informational update only. Item 5.1 on our commercial nodes toolkit update. And we have from our port authority, Luke Spatabell, speaking, I think, to the council for the first time, is that correct?
I believe so.
I think so. I think, yeah, we, we saw you at the port authority for the first time also, just last week. So we are going to hear about the commercial nodes toolkit update. Please.
Thank you, mayor and counsel. Good evening. Before you tonight, I have a, an update to the commercial nodes toolkit project. Think of this as kind of a mid-project check-in. I, I and other staff have worked to kind of compile a lot of the efforts to date, a lot of which you've, you've seen and heard plenty of before, but we're, we've compiled into one document here with the purpose of reviewing and asking for some feedback to help guide us moving forward. The vision of the commercial nodes toolkit is to provide a framework for staff, property owners, and businesses to modernize and redevelop commercial nodes while minimizing displacement. The purpose of the presentation today is to share the redevelopment strategies that staff has created to highlight work that has been done to date, including the creation of assistance programs, use of public funds, and successful grant awards from our partner agencies to businesses in Bloomington. The presentation and report that you have in your packet contains some case studies intended to highlight both the scale and breadth of this project and the work that the port authority and other city departments have done regarding commercial nodes. We'll conclude by asking for feedback and direction to help us identify gaps and prioritize our efforts. The commercial, sorry, the neighborhood commercial study completed in 2016 guided our focus to three primary nodes and identified additional future opportunities based on a criteria and rating matrix. As you're aware, many of Bloomington's commercial nodes are older, lower density, partially vacant properties in some cases, generally lacking the amenities, aesthetics, and vibrancy of modern commercial neighborhood centers. Opportunities exist to add housing, green space, and alternative transportation options to meet the needs of the community. Overall, we want to ensure the long-term sustainability of these nodes as vibrant commercial centers. With the port authority's scope now citywide, a more defined effort has been made to further this work, including a significant amount of outreach that's been done, including property owner letters, a Let's Talk Bloomington page, engagement with the real estate community, including brokers, a handful of programs by the business assistance team, some great work there, use of TIF and assistance with grants done by the real estate team within the port. Creative placemaking has done site activations and artwork projects around the city. And certainly, planning department, as you just experienced, are working hard on zoning code changes and assisted with the vision matrix. Just a little bit to highlight here what has been done to date, and certainly some successful programs here from the business assistance side. Hundreds of thousands of dollars of grant funding has been awarded to 10 businesses for the site and facade improvement program in 2024. That program is again open in 2025. The sewer access charge grant and deferral programs are active. Again, a significant amount of money awarded to a handful of businesses in 2024. And as you just saw, the excellent presentation by Dakota on the small business codes and processes review, again, an ongoing effort there to kind of eliminate the barriers that small businesses may be facing with opening or expanding in Bloomington. The port authority has used several tools, including tax increment financing, grants, and land banking to achieve desired outcomes. While some options such as land banking are still being evaluated for use in these specific cases in the commercial nodes, grants from partners including the Minnesota Deed and Hennepin County, as well as TIF dollars, have been used for recent projects such as the Europolis expansion that I'm sure you all are familiar with. In order to better target needs and understand the broad scope of assistance provided, staff has created this matrix to show how the various tools and resources are used to target the outcomes we envision. Four categories, moving left to right, break down the project scope from, let's say, a shorter term and low involvement projects, such as a ribbon-cutting ceremony assistance, to very long-term and highly capital-intensive projects like a full-scale neighborhood redevelopment. Cost, complexity, number of stakeholders involved, and staff time increases with the larger project scope and levels of support. That's as, again, as you move left to right. This is intended to help align tools with strategic goals, but we recognize this can and will evolve and shift to meet future needs. Important to note, these options that you see here today exist through the hard work of many other staff members outside the port, and of course, support from our elected officials. So with that, I have four quick case studies that I'll just highlight quickly that represent four typical project classifications that staff has provided assistance for, and then one, one example at the end for a neighboring community that shows how different resources are often used in Bloomington and those neighboring communities. This first one here is Wilderness Inquiry, a recent grand opening, which the mayor was gracious enough to attend. Again, that's, that's an example of maybe a lower level of support, a little less staff time involved than many other projects. Certainly a great level of support and, and fantastic for that business, and we love to see that. But again, different than, than a more involved project, such as, say, the Gray Barkowski Group, recent, another recent project in 2024 that the business assistance team worked with for a site and facade improvement grant in the amount of $24,999. That was an old dry cleaning space that was renovated into an office. That site and facade improvement grant went towards a full exterior remodel, and I have some before and after pictures. Really an impressive project there. Again, so, you know, just for something to consider here as I'm, as I'm going through these projects is, is both the timeline and the involvement, both in terms of capital and staff time. So this was approximately five months from start to finish, and a public assistance is approximately 5%. Again, Europolis is up here as an excellent example. This was, as you know, an existing restaurant that was combined with an old gas station parcel. A significant amount of assistance was provided to that business in the, again, a site and facade improvement grant, but also a sewer access charge credit, some tax increment financing, and a grant from the Minnesota Deed. This is approximately four years from start to finish, you know, reopening towards the end of last year. And in this case, public assistance is approximately 21% of that total project cost. And once again, a fantastic before and after. And lastly, an example from St. Louis Park, the Excelsior and Grand redevelopment from a handful of years ago. This is, was really an impressive redevelopment for its time, converted a number of blocks of single-story, low-scale, rather blighted structures into a very impressive, very dense, very walkable community that to this day really is still great and a great place to hang out. Part of that project included additional green space, over 86,000 square feet of retail space, 300 apartments, and another 300 for sale units. And again, with the scope of this project, this took 12 years approximately from start to finish with a few starts and stops along the way. And again, a pretty significant amount of project cost and investment going into that, but remains around the 21, or 19%, excuse me, of public assistance as a percent of the total project cost. And just a little before and after there as well. So with that, we have some questions to help guide some conversation. We are really looking for feedback as we're at this kind of mid-project point. You know, now, now that port has kind of expanded citywide, we have some changing resources, increased focus on small business assistance, and many other elements. So we really are looking for any feedback you can provide us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Just to let the council know, the port had this presentation just last week, we heard, we heard this presentation, and I had a good conversation there, and I knew it was coming forward to the, to the council and like to hear your feedback on this as well. Thoughts? Councilmember Lohman and Councilmember DeLisandro.
Well, thank you. I see the questions here. I guess, I remember a number of years back when we were presented with the option, we were talking about these, to kind of have different buckets to kind of fit it into, and, and, you know, we had talked about the idea of maybe looking at trying to do like a full plan for each one of these areas, more, for example, like the South Loop Plan or the Penn and, Penn and American. And so that's sort of where my, my question is, you know, as we kind of look at this, is this another point in time where we might ask ourselves that question, you know, in terms of, of emphasis and priority, in terms of looking at these, these individual areas? And I know that a past city manager once had raised the thing that he, that he was more concerned with at the time, was that we just don't, when we get ready to redevelop these areas, that we're not going to see kind of moving forward the same amount of retail space, and we'd need to look in terms of what this is going to look like in the future with the mix of residential and, and other types of things that are there. And so, you know, as I look at the examples that are kind of brought forward, the one that is, you know, probably to myself the most interesting is the Excelsior and Grand, you know, kind of moving away from the, the more, more fuzzy, green kind of corner there to, you know, a more standard kind of look. And I just, and I'm not saying that each of these nodes need to look like that, they need to kind of fit into the, the character of the neighborhood by which that it says, but I'd love to see more excitement as we kind of look across the city at these nodes. I know this redevelopment portion is, is an important part of our tax base, you know, moving forward as we look to redevelop and redefine what the city looks like and what it'll look like in the future. So I, I guess as I look at all these questions here, except I think we'll probably only get one, one crack at it here, I would just say that I, I think I'd like to see us spend a little more time with, with some of these nodes themselves in terms of just trying to figure out what that characteristic looks like that we want to have for those individual neighborhoods, kind of moving forward. And I can, I can, I can write a little bit more on these questions and send them to you.
Councilmember DeLisandro?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So related to the characteristics as well, appreciate you asking the question. When, 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 what I'd like to see is a, or maybe I can make a recommendation that as we, as we think about those desired themes and the characteristics associated with them, that we can draw a line, you know, or be more proactive about putting, putting funding and/or opportunity in front of folks specifically for those things. So, you know, it's, it's great to say, for example, that we want smaller tenant spaces, you know, or we want cultural businesses, but again, those cultural businesses like a restaurant that's serving a particular cultural, ethnic food is going to run into a whole lot of problems when they try to build a restaurant in a place that's, doesn't have any restaurant equipment today, because we make it really, really hard for them, right? And so I'd like to make those, I'd like to connect those dots a little bit more and see if we could figure out how to be more pointed in saying, this is a, this is a characteristic we're looking for in this space, and we're actually not just going to do, not that TIF is not great, don't get me wrong or anything like that, but that we're actually going to take development dollars, and we're going to, we're going to do something with it, whether that's with the developers saying, we think we can get four, four restaurants in here, so why don't you build a restaurant row of sorts that has pre-built into it the things that we want from our, that we require for restaurants, so that those restaurants can focus on opening their businesses and not focus on having to deal with our permitting process? So like, that's the kind of thing I'm, I'm hoping that we can do with this. So if, if you, as you think about that, putting, putting some kind of a unique grant program or soliciting a unique grant program or soliciting specific, you know, community development or, or port authority dollars towards those barriers, as we think about that, I think would be great. Because ultimately, I, I think I agree with all of this, and I love it. You know, making it walkable is great, but if we require the small business to pay for the sidewalk, you know, they, that's harder, right? We want native plants, great. We're going to ask, every single time, you know, we turn something over, we're going to ask them to do that, as opposed to making the landlord do it for the whole property or whatever, and then getting it, getting it in compliance to that aesthetic and letting the businesses come and go as they do, seems a better plan in my opinion. So that's the kind of thing I'm looking for here, and hopefully that's helpful context. Thanks.
Councilmember Mu.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you so much for being here tonight, presenting this. I'm so excited about the port authority going citywide. The, the one thing, and I don't know if you're doing this already or not, but something I would like more visibility on is the measuring piece, right? We're talking about construction, right? Measure twice, cut once. So have we done market feasibility studies? Have we developed district mini master plans for specific commercial nodes? Have we looked at our infrastructure opportunities to coincide together with redevelopment on this? So I definitely want to see us utilizing that more to feed into the toolkit, to say, based on the mini district plans that we've established for this zone, this is where we can then utilize outreach and engagement plus planning to get rezoning on this particular property. So definitely interested in that. And also, very interested in our marketing and branding of this. Like I said previously, I fully believe Bloomington is ripe for our next wave. We've kind of plateaued for the last 40, 50 years. You can see it in our commercial nodes. We started to see that redevelopment come back, but if we want to see it citywide and carry it over, how are we marketing and branding this? How are we getting in front of developers, small business owners, to work with them and bring them into Bloomington to start that revitalization again? And that all goes back to planning. For the next five to 10 years, I think that's a huge win if we have that planning in place that then sets us up for development over the next 20 years. So that's the piece that I would like to see a little bit more of and understand of is, what is the planning piece that we're doing to ensure that we're meeting the vision that the city has set forward, so that we're not going all different directions sometime down the road, because we have nothing to point us to north? Thank you.
The thoughts? I, I think what I would like to see, and after having seen this presentation before, I think 10 years ago, with, with the same type of aspiration, as I'm, as I'm looking at the, the eight different locations that are located here, I think if, if everything's a priority, nothing's a priority. And I think it would be important for us to somehow put these in some prioritization list. And, and I'm not even sure what to base it off of, but base it off of, you know, is it, is it the, the most important need? Is it the best opportunity? Is it equity? Is it trying to balance things? Because I look at different things here. I look at, you know, like, for example, countryside, if, if, if and when Piggy My Pizza ends up there, what kind of benefit? What, what can we build off of that? I've always said, Old Cedar and Old Chocopee, the fact that it's right on the bike route down to the river, why there isn't a brew pub there is beyond me, because everybody knows bike riders like to stop and drink beer, and it's, it's a perfect opportunity. Or Penn and 90th, we've already got the, the anchor there with Europolis, and frankly, with General Dynamics providing a fairly decent base as well. How do we prioritize? How do we put something on top of, you know, on, on the top of the list? And then look at ways to really facilitate it, whether it's land banking, which I think is always a good idea, if something comes for sale with the resources now that we have with the port authority, I think we should look strongly at land banking as much as we can. It's, not often we get willing sellers, but once we see a willing seller, we should take the opportunity. And then just trying to, to be as creative as possible in terms of the financing. I love the example from Europolis, all the different funding sources. And then the, the bottom, bottom line is, I think it was interesting, and we had this conversation at port, whether it was Europolis or even Excelsior Boulevard, that, that public funding percentage was right around 20%. It was 19 and 21%. And frankly, I was surprised at that when I, because I remember when Excelsior Avenue, Excelsior Boulevard redeveloped, and I thought that, that percentage was much, much higher. And to see that it was 20% or so was, was kind of eye-opening, but I think that needs to continue to be the, the goal that we aim toward. We can work with developers, we can, you know, incentivize as much as possible, but we've got to make sure that developers have the skin in the game and the public assistance to make it all work. So those are just my thoughts, and as I said, this is, after having this discussion twice now in the past 10, 12 years, here we are again, and hopefully we can get, eventually we can start to move some of this forward. Councilmember Carter?
I'll just add, I agree with pretty much everything that's been said, and one of the questions that I did keep kind of coming back to is just how do we prioritize? And so I appreciate- so I appreciate your comments. And I guess I would just love to see, you know, I'd love for us to be ready to be reactive to something that comes our way, but really balance that with a proactive strategy. And, and I love the examples that you gave, right, of like, each node has something unique that we can already build off of. And so doing that in a really thoughtful and strategic way with clear kind of guidance, something that's guiding staff in terms of that prioritization. So, thank you. This is really great, by the way.
Thank you.
I will say, and I think all of us could probably say this up here, every time, both the times that I've run for office and done tons of door knocking, this is a topic that comes up over and over and over again. People love Bloomington, they love living here, the Third Park's a green space. But our neighborhood nodes are just, I mean, I think we've all acknowledged it, right? Like, they just, they really are, yes, sad emoji, yes. So I know this is like, you know, these are decades-long conversations. I totally understand that. But I do feel with the change at the Port Authority and the momentum we have behind us, I think we are going to see some really great things over the next couple of years. And we're already starting to see those things. So, thank you.
Final thoughts in this council? Very good. So this is support and council. Are we going to, are you going to be in front of the Planning Commission with this presentation as well?
On Thursday.
Very good. And, and you mentioned it, but I think, and I think somebody else mentioned, Councilmember DeLisandro, making sure we connect all of the dots, as we continue with our park system master plan, as we continue with our creative placemaking, to make sure all this works together in a, in an organized fashion, I think makes a lot of sense, because we can build off of all the resources that we have to offer here as a city, whether it's art, trails, parks, commercial nodes, and so on. So, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you for all your comments. Hopefully we'll be back in front of you with an update a little shorter than 10 years from now.
We'll move on to our item 5.2. And 5.2 through 5.5 are appointments that we have to do, council. And item 5.2, the first one that we're going to start with here is a Planning Commission appointments. We, we did the Planning Commission interview process in the way that we have done a lot of the, the commissions and boards' planning and selection processes we've done in the past. It included an interview process, it included two of our council members, and it came forward with a recommendation about the appointments to the, for appointments to the Planning Commission. And I just want to ask Councilmember Nelson and Councilmember DeLisandro, who served on this interview board, summarize a bit, your thoughts on the candidates you saw, the direction, the discussion that was, that took place about what you were looking for as you moved forward in selecting, making recommendations for the Planning Commission?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, it was, it was a great evening. We got to talk with nine people that are interested in serving this community. I have to say, all of them exceptional. All of them qualified for it. Extremely difficult to narrow it down. What we saw is people with decades of planning experience, including a couple that had it at city planning level, had, had worked there. People that actively use transportation and are engaged in land use planning, and are paying attention, attention to different things, people with small business backgrounds that wanted to use that to help inform some of our policies and ordinances. It was incredible group of people. The one thing I think we're very mindful of is we had four openings on a commission that has seven people, and we wanted to maintain expertise and continuity as we move forward. So we, the Planning Commission, I think most people know, is probably one of the most robust of our, is probably easily the most robust of our commissions in terms of what it does and the recommendations it makes to the council to keep things moving forward. I mean, we just talked about commercial nodes and all that, all those types of things, as well as all the ordinances and that we look at, go through that. So it was a great group of people. We did narrow it down to four recommended. So we recommended Jared Munster, Anne Linney, Abdi Isa, and Madeline Summers. And I guess I'll just turn it over to Councilmember DeLisandro, who also served there. And I would just recognize also Chair Albrecht, who joined us for those interviews and spent her time trying to help get the next group of people onto the Planning Commission. So, anything to add?
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember DeLisandro?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank, thank you, Councilmember. Those are great. Yeah, it was a, it was a wonderful group of people. The variety of background and experience was, was broad, but the specific requirements of the job were met. And that was really great, right? I think, I think if, if, as, as Councilmember said, we have a fairly large turnover in this commission this time around, and mostly, mostly because of term limits, by the way, not because of, of falling off or anything. And so, you know, we've had that longevity. And so to be able to hit the ground running again and make sure that with all of the really busy work that we have in front of us, we had, we, we got a little bit more narrow as we went along in talking with folks to, to make sure that we felt like we could keep the commission working at its optimum. So that's the reason for the recommendations. If any of the, if it doesn't work out for any of these, I think we, I think we agreed that, you know, for the most part, you know, the, the folks that are on that list could, could pick the job up. And we, we gave Jackie, our volunteer coordinator, who also we should thank because she did a great job picking that up from, from the, her predecessor and how this is managed, it was a tall task because I did such a great job. So anyway, we have, we have, we have a good bench as well if we need to make, you know, calls in the next year or so with those folks to maintain their interest and keep them, keep them working for the city if possible.
Very good. That's a great update. Thank you, councilmembers. And I'm glad it was a, I'm glad it was a positive experience. I'm glad you saw so many good people. I keep saying, I, you know, it's not so long ago that we literally had to call around and ask people to apply for boards and commissions. And to hear that we had nine outstanding candidates for four openings this time, just makes me very happy. It, it makes me a bit disappointed that five people are not going to be able to continue in this role, but boy, I still am just so happy with the fact that we have so many qualified people. And I hope anybody who isn't picked in any of these decisions that we make tonight will still continue to find ways to be involved in their community, because that, my friends, is what makes the world go around, and it's so very important. So Councilmember Nelson mentioned it, the recommendations by the Planning Commission were to appoint Jared Munster to a term from July 1, 2025 to June 30, 2028. Anne Linney to a term, to the same term, July 1, 25 to June 30, 28. Abdi Issi, same term, July 1, 2025, June 30, 2028. And then Madeline Summers to a term from July 1, 2025 to June 30, 2026. Those were the recommendations of the interview committee. As we go through, and we're going to do our voting, as we go through and do our voting, you are free, council, to vote for whoever you would like, whoever you would like. And I want to always make that clear. This is a recommendation by the interview panel, but we all have the opportunity and the ability to vote for whoever we would like in this. So we are going to go through and do our, our voting as we do. And I'm going to turn it over to, who gets to do the honors tonight? Is it Elizabeth or Caitlin? Caitlin's going to do the honors tonight. If you could, and what we'll do as we always do, council, we'll, we'll go until we get four members with a majority vote, a majority of votes, and we will then make a motion to appoint those people to the Planning Commission. Caitlin, if you could, take it over for us, please? Okay. Ms. Manderscheid, if you could help us out here, please.
Councilmember DeLisandro?
Right. I'm sorry, I didn't have my list in front of me. I had them memorized because I was on the commission, but I wanted to make sure I got it right. So Munster, Linney, Issa, and Summers.
Okay. Councilmember Carter?
Munster, Linney, Issa, and Summers.
Councilmember Nelson? Councilmember Muah?
Munster, Linney, Issa, Summers.
Councilmember Lohman?
Issa, Munster, Summers, and Coleman.
Councilmember Rivas? Mayor Boosie?
Munster, Linney, Issa, and Summers.
All right, Mayor. You have four votes for...
Counsel, it looks like we have a consensus and four votes on the recommendations that were put forward by the Planning Commission. I look for a motion to make appointments to the Planning Commission, as stated by the Planning Commission interview, council.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Lohman, second by Councilmember Carter, to appoint Jared Munster, Anne Linney, and Abdi Issa to terms on the Planning Commission from July 1, 2025 to June 30, 2028, and to appoint Madeline Summers to a term on the Planning Commission from July 1, 2025 to June 30, 2026. Any further council discussion on this? Councilmember DeLisandro?
Just, just a quick commentary. As it was noted, Mr. Issa is, is a returning, reapportionment. His first term was, I think, a two-year term because he was filling in. So this will be his first three-year term. Thanks.
Thank you for that clarification, Councilmember. Got a motion and a second on the table? Everyone understand the motion? All those in favor of the motion regarding the appointments to the Planning Commission, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Congratulations to Jared, Anne, Abdi, and Madeline on their appointment to the Planning Commission. And thank you, councilmembers Nelson and DeLisandro, and to Chair Albrecht for doing those interviews. I know it's, it's a long evening, but it's always, it's always really, it's enjoyable, and you learn a lot about people in our community, and you get to know a lot of people. So thank you so very much for doing that. We have three additional appointments to make tonight, council. Item 5.3 is the appointment of a young adult member to the Human Rights Commission. 5.4 is the appointment of young adult member to the Parks, Arts, and Recreation Commission. And 5.5 is an appointment of the young adult members to the Sustainability Commission. So let me lay this out for you, if I could, councilmembers. So on the Human Rights Commission, we have two applicants and we have two openings. And those openings are, or those folks are Amar Elmoustafa, and I apologize for butchering that name, which I know I did, and then Jenny Wren. Those are the applicants for the Human Rights Commission. Within the Sustainability Commission, again, Amar is applied for the Sustainability Commission, as well as Hope Hines and Jada Miskel. And then on the Parks, Arts, and Recreation Commission, we have two opening, or one opening and two applicants. And one of those applicants is a person seeking reapportionment, that was Adeline Byrd. So I'm just going to lay it out as a possibility here, council, because we've got Amar and Jenny looking for appointments to the Human Rights Commission. Then we could figure that Amar has been appointed and not necessarily consider Amar for the Sustainability Commission and look at Hope and Jada. And for the Park, Art, and Recreation Commission, I know that Briar Bickle is a fine candidate, but we generally reappoint folks who are seeking reapportionment. And so then Adeline Byrd, perhaps, seeking reapportionment to the park and to look for that. I'm just throwing that out as a way to kind of sort things through here. And because we don't have official recommendations of an interview panel here, I know we've had an opportunity to look at their resumes and their background and so on. But just looking at the number of people that we have laid out here and the opportunities that we have, that this might be a way to move forward, to try and get as many good people on there as possible. Does that all make sense? All right. So we will, we will do our, our voting as we always do, but I want to make sure that everybody's clear on what I kind of laid out there.
But Mayor, do we need to do the voting on the human rights since we have two for two?
Councilmember, do you want to make a motion to make the appointments to the Human Rights Commission?
Yeah, let's just go ahead and, I don't have the names in front of me, that's, but Moustafa and Wen. So I'll move to appoint those two to the Human Rights Commission. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Lohman, second by Councilmember Muah, to appoint Elmoustafa, I'm going to butcher it all night, I apologize, Elmoustafa and Wen to the openings of four young adult members of the Human Rights Commission. Any further questions or discussion on this, council? Hearing none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Congratulations to Amar and Jenny on their appointments to the Human Rights Commission. Moving on to the Parks, Arts, and Recreation Commission. Now, this is one where we don't have the numbers in our favor, but we do have the one person seeking reapportionment. I think it would be appropriate, perhaps, to have an official vote for the Park, Art, and Recreation Commission, because this is, as I said, the only one where the numbers really don't kind of line up. So if we could, Ms. Manderscheid, if you could, we could take the vote on the young adult Park, Arts, and Recreation Commission member.
Councilmember DeLisandro? Councilmember Muah?
Adeline Byrd.
Councilmember Carter?
Byrd.
Councilmember Rivas?
Byrd.
Councilmember Lohman?
Adeline.
Say that?
Adeline Byrd.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Nelson?
Byrd.
And Councilmember Boosie?
Byrd.
Or, excuse me, Mayor Boosie.
Byrd. Counsel, Adeline Byrd has received seven votes for appointment to the Parks, Arts, and Recreation Commission as a young adult member. I look for a motion to make that appointment.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember DeLisandro, second by Councilmember Carter, to appoint Adeline Byrd to the Parks, Arts, and Recreation Commission for a term going from September 1, 25 to August 31, 26. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Congratulations to Adeline. And our final appointment is to the Sustainability Commission. And as we've talked about, we just appointed Amar to the Human Rights Commission. And so if there is agreement among the council, I would look for a motion to appoint Hope Hines and Jada Miskel to the Sustainability Commission.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember DeLisandro, second by Councilmember Lohman, to appoint Hope Hines and Jada Miskel to the Sustainability Commission as young adult members. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Thank you much, and thank you to Jackie, our coordinator for all of our Parks Arts, or Parks, for all of our boards and commissions, and all of our volunteers here in the city of Bloomington. She does a fantastic job. This worked out well, once again. And again, thank you so very much to everyone who applied. And thank you for the folks who were chosen for their service that is going to be coming up in the, in the coming years. So thank you so very much. And with that, that brings us to our item 5.6, our City Council Policy and Issue Update. And I will start, as I do, with a recap of our listening session tonight. We had, one, two, three, four, five people who spoke. Tara Owens, who is the founder and I think the director of the Todd Pod in the city of Bloomington, talked about her excitement about the new community center. And actually, I thought she talked very eloquently and balanced about her excitement for young families and what the, the new community center will mean for them, but also acknowledging the, the loss, frankly, and the, what our seniors might be feeling based on what they're going to be losing with Creekside. And I think she expressed it very well, that her hope is ultimately to make sure that both things can be true, but we can have a success on the other side of this, where both groups, the young families and the seniors within our community can, can be successful and can enjoy it. We heard from two folks, Mr. Scott Carlson and Mr. Ryan Johnson, who had some interesting things to say about villa lots in the city of Bloomington, which the city code currently doesn't allow. He's talked to planning, they both talked to planning about this. They want to, they want to be able to develop villas for seniors on lots that are smaller than what's the size that we allow here in the city of Bloomington. Laid out an interesting perspective. It fit very well in the discussion that we've been having recently about trying to find the, the sweet spot somewhere between the single-family homes and the 300-unit larger apartment buildings. And so we're going to continue that conversation. And I want, I asked city staff to, to continue that conversation and to reach out to them and see if we can't find a way to move forward with this one way or another. Christopher Campbell came forward with some concerns about legalized cannabis without regulated places to buy legalized cannabis. And he's concerned about the safety of what might be sold. And actually brought it up more than anything. I don't think that we have a whole lot of authority in this manner here with the city of Bloomington, but it does, it does, it's a good way to bring it forward. I know that the police are aware of this. We recommend it also to Mr. Campbell that a call to the Cannabis Control Board at the State of Minnesota would be a good place to start if he has some concerns about what is being sold and by who and where. And finally, we heard again from... about what is being sold and by who and where. And finally, we heard again from Linda Lang, who has spoke to us in the past about, about Creekside and about what the needs of a new community health and wellness center should be in terms of design and amenities and how we could best serve the, the senior population who will be using that. Came forward with, with additional suggestions, including room size and locker room size and, and different suggestions and ideas. I know I saw staff taking all kinds of notes. I'm sure it's all going to be part of the continued discussion as we look to finalize the design for the Community Health and Wellness Center. And so we thank Linda for coming back once again and, and having that conversation with us. And because I keep track every time we do this, I couldn't help but note of our five speakers, we had four unique speakers that we had not heard from before. So I really appreciate people coming forward and feeling comfortable to talk to the council about some of the concerns that they have. And in fact, we left a couple of people on the bench because they wanted to speak and we weren't, we just simply ran out of time. And they're first on our list for our next listening session and looking forward to hearing from them about whatever they have to bring forward. So that was our listening session tonight. The only other thing that I'm going to add, and you probably all know what I'm going to say, that the farmer's market opens on Saturday, and I will see you all here bright and early. Looking forward to it. I think we're at the time of year where the, the, the vegetable pickings are, you know, usually, it's usually cabbage and lettuce and maybe some, some early potatoes if you're lucky. But it's, it's just a great community get together. I love coming to the, the farmer's market, seeing all the people who are there. It's just a great community feel. And hats off to our city staff who pulls this all together every year and makes it one of the best in the Twin Cities, I think. So, well done. I will turn it over to Ms. Zedine for any update from the city manager's office.
Well, Mayor and councilmembers, I'm going to maybe pull an audible over here with the police department. We have a book sale coming up, right? Starts June 7 officially? We're going to go with yes, we're going to go with that, June 7, maybe through the 20th? Hopefully that's right on record. Instagram isn't working fast enough for me. It's a big deal, I've heard, here in the city of Bloomington. It's something that's been going on for a very long time, that our police department has been leading and working with others to raise money. So hopefully, I, I heard about it from somebody who actually curls with my husband. He's looking forward to going to the book sale in Bloomington. So very excited to hopefully go to my first book sale here. So very, a lot, a lot of work by teams, by the staff. Just can't even believe how many books, puzzles, games that have been donated for this purpose. So hopefully everyone can make it out.
Very good. Thank you. Counsel, anything to bring forward this week? Councilmember De La Sondra, and then Councilmember Lohman. Councilmember De La Sondra?
Very quick, very quickly. I, I, I know it's come up a couple of times, but with the Memorial Day holiday recently, I wanted to kind of bring back up. Do, do we, have we talked, when was the last time that we had a strategic discussion around management of the cemetery? It seems as though, I mean, I, I'm not sure, like, I don't know enough. Obviously, I care a lot about that working well, but I also don't know if we should be in the business of that, and if there's a place for us to hand that off to somebody. I don't know anything about it. But, so I don't want to make comment on it. But like, when was the last time we did that? And if, if there wasn't one, should we? I don't know if the council believes there should be something. But I was thinking maybe, maybe reviewing that might be a good idea, just given the fact that it seems to be hit or miss sometimes with, with what we try to do. And I, I'm sure staff is doing the best they can. But there've been some modernization strategies over the last 10 years. I know there's software out there now. I know we have some software and, and everything. So I'm wondering if now is the time to take a look at that. And I'm not suggesting it's a high priority, but maybe, you know, going into even 2026, putting, making sure it's on somebody's work plan or something like that. Anyway.
And, and I can't recall. We, we've had conversations about it, but I don't know specifically on the topic of, of maintenance, and specifically on, on the topic of maintenance as it relates to things like Veterans Day and Memorial Day, because I think that's, that's, those are the two important ones. But I think even the other 363 days of the year, just to, to, to maintain a cemetery in such a way that respects the people who are there and the people who come to visit, the folks who are there. So I see Ms. Zedine typing fast here, and so I'm sure we'll have that conversation in the future. But thank you for bringing that up. Councilmember Muah, question, comment?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to comment on that, because I recently, like, two weeks ago, just went on a cemetery tour with a Mr. Danielson who, who does cemetery tours. We talked through it, actually looked through the families that are, that were in Bloomington, talked about the cemetery itself, how it's complicated because technically they're private lots owned by families. But as a city, I've engaged with our city managers to understand what are opportunities we have, whether it's grants or the Minnesota Historical Society, what can we do to ensure that we're paying the respect that we have to the residents that came before us, who built this city. And so that has very much been on my mind as I've been working through and partnering with Mr. Danielson and bringing it forth to our city managers. And so very relevant, very recent that I just had that conversation. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. I, I would say, Mr. Mayor, that, that, you know, when, when we picked out the, the plot and everything for my mom, when she passed, this is in Pennsylvania, of course, there were things like, you, you gave a certain amount and it came, became a perpetual maintenance program and things of that nature. I just don't know if we've done those kinds of things. And, and so there's lots of options that exist there, as well as opportunities to work with the historical societies and everything for unique, you know, things. It just, it feels like it might be worth us taking a look at it, especially if, if there's still plots available and they're still expecting people to, you know, be buried there and things like that, which I'm sure there are, then, you know, it, it needs to be meaningful to those people going forward as well. So thanks for the opportunity to bring that up. I look forward to hearing more about it.
And thank you for bringing that up, Councilmember. It's, it's timely and a worthwhile conversation to have. And by the way, the, the Memorial Day event at the cemetery this year was fantastic, once again. So, and the parade was a lot of fun as well. Councilmember Lohman?
Well, I'll pick up right there, because that's where I was, I was going to mention that, that you did a nice job. I didn't even make it over to the other, the secondary event, but you were there and Debbie Cattell was there, delivered a very powerful message of bipartisanship and, and just really putting the, the day in its proper place in terms of where, where it should be. So appreciate that. And, yeah, it's great we're having that conversation about the cemetery there. I've been on a couple tours with Danielson, too. He's an interesting guy. So, so the other thing I wanted to mention, I know that, Mayor, you're going on a trip to Tampa Bay. And I wanted to mention, I shot you an email about this. I had a chance to see it while I was down there. They have this, they're calling it a digital twin of Tampa. And they kind of use it to help with development. And they can, it's almost a 3D type of thing where they can change. They can, you know, you'd be able to see the water, or they want to build buildings. It's really an interesting presentation if you have just a half hour to get away and, and see that. Or maybe it's even a part of the presentation. It's just an awesome thing where they've just mapped out all, all of Tampa Bay. And they use that to kind of sell their, sell their city. So...
And, and just to let you all know, I, I am going to Tampa at the end of this month for a U.S. Conference of Mayors event. And they have actually asked me to present on Bloomington's business, small business support work that we've been doing and the work we've been doing with entrepreneurs. So excited to do that. So, Councilmember Muah?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just want to take a moment to address something that happened after our last meeting, and I think is very relevant, after we just had two proclamations, leading with respect, common ground, inclusion, and belonging. Last, two Thursdays ago, I woke up to messages from friends and neighbors sharing me screenshots from a Facebook post that had racist comments directed at me. The words specifically said, "Go back to Laos." And there's only one person on this council that that is meant for. And I want to be clear that that statement, "Go back to Laos, go back to wherever you are from," is racism. It's not a misunderstanding. It's not a political difference. It's a deliberate attempt to say that you do not belong here. And that is not acceptable here in Bloomington. We don't all have to agree, because disagreements are part of democracy. And we will always have different opinions, perspectives, and values. And that's perfectly okay. That's healthy. There is a line, and racism crosses that line every single time. Telling someone to go back to another country based on their race, perceived background is not a debate. It's about exclusion. It sends a message that no matter how long you've lived here, doesn't matter if you're a citizen, no matter how much you've contributed, you do not belong. And that is not something I will stay silent about, because these words do more than offend. They cause real harm. They make people, people feel unsafe, unwelcome, and unseen. And they threaten the kind of community we say and we've been working to build. And some say that racism is a thing of the past, but moments of like this remind us, remind me, that it's still here. It's still happening. And we all have the responsibility to speak up and push back when we see it. And to the person that said those words, I don't hate you. We clearly have different points of view. And even so, I'll continue to work on your behalf and consider your thoughts and opinions and do what I was elected to do, which is serve the city with integrity, with compassion, and with a deep love for every resident who calls Bloomington home. And so I just want to spend a little time to address that, because some things bring up a lot of emotions. But there's always a line, and racism is not something that we here in Bloomington believe in and ignore. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Muah. Well said. Very well said.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, I just want to apologize on behalf of people, you know, especially white folk in this city. I, I don't, I don't think it's ever okay. And I don't, I don't think us staying silent as members of this council, we, we need to make sure that you know that we don't find it acceptable either. And that we'll always be fighting on your behalf. All of us up here have a diverse background. It's what makes us a good council. We bring that here to the table every day. And, you know, I, I've, I've gotten my share in the past for my own identities and things like that. And so I, I can relate to how you feel. But I, as a white person, don't know what racism feels like. I get to avoid it every day. And so I just want to acknowledge that we here, if I may speak on all of our behavs, appreciate you. And we want you to be here. And we're grateful that your family is here.
Thank you, Councilmember De La Sondra. And I, I appreciate the, the, the thought behind that. And I'm looking forward to all the residents, all of our staff, all of our council members to continue working forward. Apologies only get us so far. It's our actions that I'm looking for. And so I know we're, we're dedicated to that, and we'll continue to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmembers. Counsel, that completes our agenda this evening. With that, I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Lohman, second by Councilmember Muah, to adjourn tonight's meeting. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, council, for the discussion this evening. Thank you to staff for the presentations and the work that went into this one. And thanks to everyone who was here for the proclamations, for their input on a variety of different things. It was good to see everybody. Everybody have a great rest of your week.